All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm gonna call this regular meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board to order. I am Darrell Wilson, I'm the Vice Chair. Today is Wednesday, September 7th, 2016. With us tonight are Jim Barkhouse, Mike Howey, Roger Lassard. My name is Darrell Wilson, I'm the Vice Chairman, and I'll be the Presiding Officer for the meeting. There's a chance that our Chairman, Mr. Fink, is on his way and may show up, or he may not, but we do have a quorum. There is an even number of Board members tonight, so any tie vote is considered a denial. The applicant can consider that and decide whether they want to proceed or not. We have several items on the agenda tonight. It's a public meeting, and there'll be a chance for the public to speak on these items. If you do wish to speak, we ask you to step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record when it's your turn. So, the first order of business. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of our last meeting, August 3rd? And are there any corrections or revisions?
Shouldn't still be alternate member, what are you throwing member?
I think later in the minutes, address is not...
Oh, did it address it later? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, kid.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes for August.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, we adopted the minutes from the August 3rd meeting. The next item on the agenda is preliminary plan for a major use site development plan and a major subdivision titled Franklin Court for Down East Main Property Management. Proposal is to construct three duplex buildings, six total units, on a 9,800 square foot property at 90 Franklin Street, tax map 138, Lot 80, in the downtown zone. Is there someone present representing the applicant?
We've submitted our plans, following up with a sketch plan last month. I believe the layout is the same as you saw a month ago. Essentially, we did some alternative analysis of the parking that the staff asked us to do, then move in the buildings to the front, put in the parking to this rear and side. Didn't allow for as much parking as we proposed with a sketch in front of you. You show 2012 spaces. In the alternative analysis, there was a wax, we thought there were eight and 10 spaces available, some different layouts. So, we thought it'd be best if people had... It was on site, drainage, smaller drainage, it's been designed by fire engineering. We can discuss that with you later. We'll be caught on site, we need to discharge this 400 degree system like that. We are asking for waiver, we'd consider a waiver, aisle width is 22 feet. It's proposed, we know what is required as to for our... So, I ask for a 22 feet. That's only because of a lot of construction, just not quite wide enough to get out of there comfortably.
Anything else that you wanted to add?
No, I'll just call it.
Okay. Does the Board have questions for the applicant?
Are there any elevations in these plans?
What the front of the building looks like? Yes. Page 52, Jim. There's a front elevation in the floor plan.
Okay. A photo rendition kind of thing.
Thank you, Steve.
Sure.
Any other questions that you gentlemen have tonight? I had a question about, it looks like there's a fair number of items on the TRT. One of them talks about the parking and the six inch curb stop. Have you considered that, and does that alter your parking arrangement in any way?
Yeah, we're going to incorporate the curb stops, so we will not need a waiver on that standard.
So, you could meet the 24 foot aisle width?
No, not the aisle width, but the park, that memo, part of the memo is referring to our proposal to have a nine by 18 parking stall, technically it's worth having a nine by 18 and a half stall.
So, it seemed like the stall length of 18 and a half could be reduced to 16 and a half with the curb?
Yes.
So, does that mean that the parking space is, like, all you need in the aisle width is a foot on either side, right, to meet 24?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to cut them back any further than 18.
But they would be allowed to be 16, right? Is that the intent?
So, in the ordinance, there's a section, there's a table on the right, and if you have a curb stop, therefore the car front overhangs over, and therefore you don't need as much length. I can't remember what it is, I believe, we haven't discussed exactly where he was going to provide a curb stop, but I think they're all 90 degree angles, Steve?
Yes, they are 90s.
So, he's gonna do as much as he can to meet the, it's a reduction of 1.5 foot in the length of the stall. If a curb stop is there.
So, okay, so it's not clear to me, you add a curb stop where the front wheel would be, and you still have overhang?
Yes, but I can't overhang the property line or be into the building.
Does the overhang then not count as part of the 18 something feet?
Yes.
So, you can't just cut the back end off, that part went to the front?
Well, the car still has to be there.
So, that's the 18 that you want to stay with that 18?
Yes.
I...
So, the waiver specifically is for the 22 foot aisle?
For the aisle.
Okay, understood. Are there any other questions from the Board? Does the city have other concerns about the TRT and items?
No, so, we went through all the comments, as you said, there's quite a few with Steve, and I don't think there was any that Steve, if I remember correctly, had any issues with. It's just that there will be change at the other supplemental instead of reprinting everything. Is that correct, Steve? I don't want to speak for you, but...
That's correct, for the final submission.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
I mean, we have no outstanding on resolve issues, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, this is a public meeting, does any member of the public wish to comment? Hearing or seeing none, I'm gonna close the public meeting. What would the Board like to do with this application?
We lost our motion maker, or made that call?
Essentially, yes.
Well, I'll make a stab at it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plan for a major site use development plan named Franklin Court in the downtown main, for main Down East property management.
In the downtown zone?
Is there a second for that motion?
A second.
Any discussion? I would add, for, as part of a discussion, that we might want to consider adding to the motion about the waiver that they're requesting for the parking width. Or would you want, did you want to do that separately?
I can add that to, add that to the motion, that we would allow that waiver of 22 feet.
Okay. All right, so that amends the motion, any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion?
Mr. Chairman? Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Was it, I'm sorry, was there a motion that was just made to waive the parking aisle, or the...
Yes, that waiver was appended to the motion that we just made.
Just to, just to remind you that when things are waived, we're gonna make sure that there's no, I'm not sure if you want to do that now or later, but under waivers, procedures, under Article 6, Section 602.9, that, due to special circumstances or a particular project under B, I guess that would be next month.
Yeah, I felt like the applicant's description of, you know, being able to implement parking in a restricted sort of development zone, it was really in support.
Yeah, it would be great to, then we explain why you're supporting the waiver either now or next month, just due to special circumstances, it's at the downtown, this is sufficient parking, it's not going to change the intent of the parking standards.
Let's, can we make a note in the record, Dan, at the next meeting, that we...
Yeah.
Detail the justifications for the waiver that we've already granted.
So, just to make sure that, so, the idea is that if other people ask for waivers, that they understand, that, you know, granted for a certain reason.
Duly noted, thank you.
Yep.
All right, moving on to the next item, thank you. The next item is a preliminary plan for a minor subdivision entitled Jesse's Beach Subdivision for Nome, Norm Cote. The proposal is to create three lots located on 111 acre property off of Route 180 on Garland Road, tax map 107, Lot 17 and 17.9, in the rural and shoreline zones. Is there someone representing the applicant today?
Again, Steven Salzberg. We are asking for a three lot division of this property, one of which the owners can retain, Lot 2. Lot 1 has already been sold, and Lot 3, my client is purchasing, which is the 80 acre passing of the gravel pit on it. There's no proposed new road development with this proposal. There's already a road existing that goes in to the gravel pit along the line between boundaries between Lots 2 and 3. Simple as that.
All right, Dan, does the Board have questions for the applicant?
Refresh my memory, I mean, was this application brought forward because of there was a procedural error in the subdivision application process, is that correct?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Was, has this been already subdivided, and now we're going through a subdivision? Is that, am I recalling that correctly, from the initial proposal?
Lot 1 was sold less than five years ago, so in order to legally sell Lot 3 to my client, the land already needs to go through this process.
Okay.
So, if I may, so there's a violation that happened. I was not at the last planning board, but it's my understanding there was a question pertaining to if the process that was being proposed was going to be good enough to solve the problem, and maybe we should verify with the attorney. Last month in your package, there was a memo that I had drafted and copied everybody involved, and that memo was drafted with legal advice. So, and I had talked to John Fink about that matter to make sure that he was comfortable with that, so, but he's not here tonight. So, because I knew there was a question from the Board at the last meeting pertaining to that, so that should solve the problem.
Okay, is the city's comfortable?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we talked about going forward, this would solve the problem from the past.
From the TRT memo, the question I had was about the fact that this land is a significant aquifer, and the note says riparian habitat. Does riparian mean stream?
It's the area surrounding a water feature.
Oh, so it's the lake, it's Graham Lake, it makes a riparian?
Wetland or aquifer, some open body of water, riparian is the area surrounding that.
Okay.
It's probably still wooded.
So, basically, really, this is not the, if you know, this, on page 3 of the application, the applicant is asking for a lot of waivers, because really, at this point, this project is a technicality in many ways. Not only are we fixing a violation that took place, but also, this is really two large lots with nothing, the intent is not to change the use of these lots, really. Mine is already being used as a pit, and the other one is used as a what?
Recreation.
Nothing, really.
So, the use isn't changing?
Use isn't changing, so, he's asking for a whole bunch of waivers. When I take any subdivision, I go through all the state information pertaining to historic properties, habitats, anything like this, because the applicant is theoretically expected to ask these letters. The only thing that was of interest, not that there's anything there, was riparian habitat, just to kind of note it, and that was it, just make sure that we, it really has no bearing on the outcome of the project.
So, there's no development plan?
No.
There's no change of use of any of the land area?
Steve, since it's a subdivision, has there been a survey filed, or will there be a survey filed at the registry?
Well, this plan will be filed.
This plan will be filed, okay.
Yep, if it's approved.
The only thing of interest I found was the riparian habitat, like, no, that was it.
But from a zoning standpoint, there's no restriction on that, they've just noted that feature on the ground.
I'm gonna let, is it, that was within part of the shoreline zone, but there's no...
Right, so, there's no restrictions on that, they've just said, hey, this is here.
Do you want to add a note, Dan, to the two pieces of land that say that they're part of a aquifer, or is that part of a review that would happen later if they were going to propose some...
No, I'm gonna put the note on the plan, that's over mapped aquifer.
That's fine, I think, is it a low yielding or a high yielding aquifer?
It is a, it is a significant aquifer.
Okay, so we should probably note that as well, and also in the signature block, if you guys approve all the waivers, those will be also noted, so. It's truly all technical at this point.
Okay, so, the Board agrees, then, that the waivers that he's listed, that the applicant has listed, the soils test pit, the wetlands mapping, the street design plans, and the letters from historic fish and wildlife, we're okay with that? Is there anything else on the TRT?
Um...
Signature block, lots involved in the subdivision?
Yeah, he's gonna do that after.
Applicant's waiver request, okay, so...
Includes all lots involved in the subdivision, that's actually kind of important, because he does, on the left-hand corner, if my memories go around, he lists the lot involved, but he doesn't list them all, he doesn't list the, which one, you're missing, the violation lot, but it's, he's agreed to add it for the final review.
On the plan, right?
Right?
Yes, we're gonna just delete the reference lots 2 and 3.
Okay. Yeah, if he just deletes the, this section, and shows it as we approved the subdivision as shown on this plan. That's what you're stating, right?
That's what I'm gonna say on the next submission.
See, if you're missing Lot 1.
Okay, right, yeah, so all they have to do is strike that, okay?
Again, it's all technicalities that nobody would have noticed, except me.
All right, then.
I mean, there's no development plan, so, it's my comment, I mean, he's requesting waivers, he's not doing anything, he's just, you know, basically blazing out lines to separate these lots, so, I think that's a reasonable request, just to minimize cost, you know?
Okay.
I mean, he's asking to waive the wetlands mapping, you know, there's no construction going on, there's no road construction.
If they ever do decide to build, they're gonna have to go through that anyways.
That's right.
Yeah, that seemed like what it would seem like to me, they're gonna have to come back here anyway, if anything changes, if they go any further.
In worst case scenario, if they did two house lots, it's a driveway, it's not like there's any impact on roads or anything, it's, I mean, driveway, private road, or private driveway, or, it's not like, so it's...
Okay. All right, so what would the Board like to do with this application?
Public comment?
Oh, my goodness, yes, this is a public hearing, and so, if anybody, any member of the public would like to comment on this application, please make yourself known. Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing. Now, I'm gonna ask what the Board would like to do with this application.
I make a motion that we accept the preliminary plan. Minor subdivision titled Jesse's Beach Subdivision for Norm Cote. Proposal is to create three lots located on 111 acre property off of 180, and it is in the rural and shoreline zones. And we should include, and it should...
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Is there a second to that motion? And then we can discuss.
We have to include the waivers.
Keep going.
Oh, okay, keep, the motion is still going, wait, it's not done yet.
It's a completeness motion, right?
Huh?
Yes.
A completeness motion, right?
Well, I accepted it, preliminary plans, which is completeness, right. And with the waivers for wetland mapping and street designs, and basically, I accept it.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? All those in favor? Motion passed. All right. Agenda item number three, moving on to our next agenda item tonight. We have a sketch plan for a major subdivision titled Main Estates Phase 2 for Main Estates LLC. The proposal is to create 13 lots on a 16 acre property off of Sugar Way, tax map 33, lots 4 and 4-21 in neighborhood zone. Is there someone representing the applicant?
Steven Salzberg.
Steve, you're back.
I missed you guys.
You're like a one-man wrecking crew tonight.
Way back when, 10 years or so ago, when we designed the first phase of this subdivision, we already had a design for the second phase, it's in front of you now. That's why I kept going with the lot numbers, I didn't start over with Lot 1, this is a Candy Way was actually cut out, the trees have been cut out, because they had to get down and build a detention pond that's on Lot 28, that pond actually exists. We may have to expand it a little bit to take care of the new impervious. Engineer Jim Kaiser's working on that right now. We plan, Sugar Way was planned all along, the road that's there now, Phase 1, was planned all along to be a city street. Patrick, we'll be dedicating that to the city hopefully soon, as well as the new street, will be a city street. That's our intent. All utilities will be private, the sewer, the water, will be, there's no city services down there now. We may contemplate extending the water down there, but we haven't decided for sure yet whether that's gonna happen or not. It's quite a ways off the end of the city's water line on Christianer Road, so that's yet to be determined. So, we may have to come up with a, we'll come up in our next submission, preliminary subdivision, how we're gonna take care of fire protection, either sprinkle the homes or put water tanks in the ground. I don't have any other comments.
The stormwater easement and that drainage is already in place, and there's a maintenance agreement for that?
Yes, yep, it's part of Phase 1, actually.
How many houses have they got in there now?
I'm sorry?
You know how many houses they got in there now, on Sugar Way?
Uh, 10 or 12.
12.
I noticed in the TRT, I noted that a road association was going to be formed, is that a temporary measure?
Yes.
As you were saying, okay.
Yeah.
So, that pretty much is covering snow removal?
That's right, snow removal, drainage, edge of the roads every summer and stuff like that, taking care of them, detention ponds, will be part of that agreement.
But at the time, the intent, the goal was to make it a public road?
That's right.
Okay.
Are there other questions from the Board for the applicant?
Not at this time, for me.
Does the city staff have any comments or concerns?
No, we had a, it's a great project, we had a great conversation, it's sketch plan, so all the notes there were, you know, just way beyond the sketch plan review, was a conversation that we had with staff, and I think that the applicant and the city is pretty much on the same page regarding the project.
Okay, this is a public meeting, does any member of the public wish to comment? Yes, sir, could you please step up and state your name? Yes.
Jack Todeschi, I'm the abutter on the north side of the property. I had concerns about the landscape plan, possibly the spring water drainage, storm drainage, privacy screening. So, I was wondering if there were any considerations for this, because that's right there in the backyard. Uh, so I was wondering if there were any considerations for this, because that's, that's right there in the backyard.
Okay, yeah, there's certain provisions that are in the city ordinances that would have to be met. Our purpose tonight is what they call sketch plan, so we're not gonna make any decisions or determinations tonight.
Okay.
Um, the applicant is gonna put together a, a package that we're gonna review next time, that's gonna have details like that in there. And we can certainly make sure that those, you said landscaping, what were the other two items?
Privacy buffer, screening. Especially water drainage, there's a lot of spring water there and runoff.
Oh, yeah, storm water.
So, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I remember the lay of the land of that, the, the subdivision abutting has been, uh, is a long story, in the sense that there was some violation there, so, uh, there's a lot of things that doesn't meet standards. This being said, the, the contours, the, the grades, do they dip towards there? It's very wet area there, so I think that's a very good comment, and we're going to definitely pay attention to that to make sure that there's no further impacts to the abutters there.
No.
Yeah, steep slope.
Is that mostly in the first phase, though?
Wait, 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 we have a gentleman talking with us now, so...
Uh, that was it. I just didn't wanna miss the opportunity to speak up when it was time.
Okay, yes, it's been put on the record, thank you.
What's your name, is it Jackie?
Jack Tedeschi.
Tedeschi, okay, I see where you, where you bump it is.
Thank you very much, sir.
Did you say that corners a lot of wetland there, of the stream there?
Well, not exactly a stream, but there is a lot of spring water that
Spring water, okay.
Runs downhill, and storm water, too.
I mean, it's hard to say that's, that's a very wet subdivision where, um, abutting that land.
And it's also our intent that if there's anything going on with the existing subdivision, we're gonna make sure that Dwight's comfortable with that before we go into a Phase Two of an existing subdivision.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Do you have any problems there now?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Michelle, when you referred to some, um, substandard or violation of subdivision, you're talking the next rule.
Yeah, 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 not you. No, absolutely not. So, I think that there's maybe issues there that are not, they're existing and those are the issues, but we're gonna make sure with, with Steve not to, just to control storm water as it should be controlled, absolutely.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody else from the public wish to make a comment on this application? No, thank you, we're gonna close the public hearing then. Um, there is really no determination to be made. Are there any questions you have for us?
No, no, I think you'll be, um, happy with our submission when we finally get to it, may not be next month, it may be November, but we'll be back in front of you with our complete application.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much then.
Thank you.
Yeah, the other comment I was gonna make, it looks like according to this plan here, most of the wetland was on Phase One.
Is that what the brown does with wetland, yeah?
This is Phase Two, here.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to state that. Is that, is that what we're looking at still?
That's right, lots five and twenty-five and twenty-six are the only lots that are about that wetland.
Okay.
Everything to the west is wet, that goes behind, uh, the wetland that makes up behind Kane's repair shop there on Bucksport Road on the flats. That's that same piece of wetland.
It's a large wetland complex.
So it'll be, all that, all those boundaries will be detailed on the submission?
Yep, they look just like this. I mean, this is, this is actually our preliminary plan and sketch.
Okay.
We've gotten that far with the designs.
All righty.
But yes, the wetlands have been mapped, they were mapped ten years ago, and the criteria hasn't changed.
They don't move around much? Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item that we have on the agenda tonight is the is the final plan for a major use. Site development plan and a major subdivision titled Ellsworth Workforce Housing Project. For Manx Development LLC, the proposal is to construct ten multifamily apartment buildings, fifty total units, and one community building on a four point six seven acre property at sixty-three, sixty-seven, and sixty-nine Washington Street. Tax map, one thirty-one lots, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, and part of seventeen in the urban zone. And with that, is there someone here to represent the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Nancy St. Clair with St. Clair Associates, here tonight with my husband David St. Clair to talk to you folks again about the proposed workforce housing project on Washington Street. So, we do have a rendering here. We did not bring an easel, apologize for that, so, David is here, he'll be behind the board. But if you folks recall at the last meeting, there were a few items that were discussed with you folks. A couple of things we've added to the plan based on those discussions, and were highlighted in the memo that was sent to Michelle and Jana as part of our final filings, so you do have that in your packets, but I wanted to just highlight a couple of things. Uh, one is if you recall from the discussion, we talked about, and then the easel appears, thank you so much.
Ta-da, it's like somebody's watching.
We talked a little bit about traffic calming and the avoidance of having this area be a cut-through. So we do have signs that we've added to both ends of the site that, that identify that there is no cut-through traffic allowed. We had in our original plan a raised crosswalk here, and a raised crosswalk in this location here. Uh, as part of our discussions with you folks last time, we've also added down in this lower end here, you can't see it on this rendering, is a raised speed table. It's not a crosswalk, so that's why it doesn't show up here on the, the rendering is colored up. But it's a raised speed table. The difference between the two is the crosswalk is at sidewalk elevation, so it's a consistent barrier across the drive aisle. With a raised speed table, we have the ability to taper back down and allow that gutter flow to continue for drainage, so that's important for us in that if you recall, we had a discussion about the fact that we have a parakech basin right there, and those actually pick up the flow from the high point of this connector drive that goes out to Foster Street, and pulls everything back into the site as part of our treatment system. So, we did add that, so it's the third point of, um, traffic calming, if you will, so we've got them on either end, we do have the signage as well that was added. So, we've added further detail to the drawing set, a lot of the details, um, have more information provided for them. One of the things that we did change in this area here, we had the grass underdrain soil filter and the combination nut with a detention basin. In our original design, we had more gradual slopes on the outside, and more steeper slopes on the inside, we actually reversed that. So we have a more gradual slope on the inside of the basin, and steeper on the outside. We're talking about two-to-one slopes and three-to-one slopes, but it's just the reverse, so it's a little bit more gradual on the interior basin, so that did change the grading of the basin. We also added further detail at the outlet in this area here to provide more information on the spillway elevation, those types of things. So that's been added to the plan as part of the detail as well. When we did the change to the pond, that affected the volume of storage in the pond, and so, part of our data that we provided as part of the final review for TRT was an updated stormwater model. And that modeling also included the tie-in points for the roof drip line BMPs, where they connected in with the underdrains into the drainage system. That, all that modeling has been done. The net result was the numbers were slightly different, but the, the bottom line is there's no net increase at the study points that were analyzed as, as part of the analysis, so although the numbers are slightly different, they're still below the pre-development peak rates, which is the criteria that we need to meet for that. So that's in the packet that was provided and reviewed at the last TRT meeting. We also made some, uh, changes to the waterline connections for the, the individual buildings, uh, came up with a plan that was much more streamlined. Uh, we have reviewed that with the water department and the fire department, I believe everybody's on board with that as a result of the TRT meeting that we had. We have adjusted the landscaping in the vicinity of the entrance and added site triangles at the entrances to identify that those are areas that need to be kept clear as part of the, the site distance, visibility at the entrances. In addition, we had a last minute comment that although we moved the landscaping from around the hydrants, we missed one. Uh, that has been upgraded and is shown, it's this hydrant right in this location here, there was some daylilies in front of it, those have been pulled away from the hydrant. We provided that to the fire department and to, to staff as well, so that has been accommodated and it is shown right here on this plan, so. Um, I think with that, if there are any other questions that you folks have, the only other item we do have to discuss tonight is the lighting and the waivers that we talked about previously. As part of our package, we did include an updated plan, there's a colored up plan in your packet that shows a couple of areas where we're actually, um, a little bit below the, the minimum standard, but if you look at those standards in the context of a residential scale, we're more comparable at that scale. Um, they're low for the urban district, uh, for those standards, and those are very, very small areas, there's three of them, I believe, and they're highlighted in blue on the plan that's in the packet. We also have two locations that there's a bit of light spillover, one is right at the intersection entrance here, and one is in this location here. This one's really unavoidable, we can't do anything much more here, because it's culminated by an existing light fixture that's in the shopping center. And so we can't really get down, we have a, that's one of our, our low areas right there, which is near the dumpster. Uh, and to bring it down any lower, to try to get any spillover, we just, there's a fixture right there that we can't really deal much with. Uh, so that's one of the areas, and then as I noted, this one in this location, and that is right at the entrance, it's within the street, it's not on any adjacent properties. Um, and sort of the added benefit of that is it does help to illuminate that intersection that there is no other lighting in that area, but it does spill over the property line, and that's the, the two locations that are shown on the plan as well. So, uh, we are asking for waivers, they are noted on the plans, uh, the language was provided with, uh, supporting information as to the background as to why we're asking for those two waivers, but, um, that's it.
Other questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions for the applicant, 'cause I appreciate all, you accommodate us with all our concerns from last month, I appreciate that. But I guess I have a question to the city. It just so happens last couple weeks I've been driving on Water Street, and the traffic is three, like, three o'clock and five o'clock. I mean, goes to Union River from the light. And I, and I know Foster Street won't be bad, and Washington Street won't play bad, but High Street and Water Street, which is added congestion.
Well, so, I just want to...
I mean, there's nothing they can do, really.
No, I understand, so this is not, I just wanna say to make sure that we put things in perspective, this is not a high traffic generator, that's the first thing that we need to remember, they are going to be diffusing from that site from two different points, and when they get to those two roads, there's two ways to, to diffuse. So just that alone is a plus.
But that's where the traffic goes.
Correct.
It's waiting there.
To address your, um, concern at the, uh, Water Street, Main Street intersection? You are right on, there is an issue. We have, I believe, just ordered a part, or we are about to order a, um, part that's going to make that, that light much more of a smart traffic light, and we're going to be able to give priority uh, on a time basis to certain segment to accommodate the, 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 the flow of traffic that is high at that time of the day depending on one direction. So we are working on that, uh, situation, and hopefully it's gonna get better. We also have had, um, more traffic due to construction right now, and it's been an extremely busy summer, everybody's saying they've seen twenty percent increase, and we just pulled some traffic data, um, um, that's showing that, uh, we're trying to get more details, but there's also an increase. So I think all these things combined have, have been, uh, have added to the congestion at that light, but we're definitely taking that situation seriously. I think what's important is that project is not going to really, uh, have any, um, impact.
Well, it will follow some traffic, but I mean, there's nothing they can do. But the other problem is on High Street, 'cause the only way I notice, when I go to High Street, I just go to Shaw's, 'cause the light's there. But if you try to get there from Foster or Washington Street, and I know they don't wanna hear this word, you know, lights, I mean, there's no way we can put a light.
Well, it's, it's a traffic signal in the block, there's, there's pros and cons for that.
Yeah.
Uh, we, you know, continuously looking at what's going on on High Street, trying to improve it, and I think we're aware of the situation.
Where and there, I mean, it's gonna put more traffic out there.
Yeah.
I mean, not quite a bit, but if they're talking another fifty units down the road, it's gonna put even more.
We'll address that when that comes to the planning board at this point.
I'm glad you're aware of that light.
Yeah, we've had this, we had the traffic, uh, analysis done by Goro Palmer, um, looked at by Sabegotek that handles our traffic signal. Uh, they reviewed the, um, the traffic study, and we're in concurrence with Goro Palmer that that has no significant, or really very little impact to the whole, so. I'm not minimizing what you're saying.
I know, I just...
But I'm bringing it back to the topic at hand, which is, uh, not really any, if I'm not, so.
I know, I mean, I appreciate, I guess, that you accommodate us with all our concerns last time. So, very happy, and I know the neighbor'd be happy to hear that you added some more, uh, boundaries to their land. Or borders, yeah. Now, how far is it actually from the end there to Rennie's or their parking lot, it just...
This brown right here?
Yeah.
Is the back corner of the Ellsworth Shopping Center building, so Rennie's is right there. That's the back side of it.
Okay, so there's nothing really there on the, on the
If you, if you look at this...
On the Foster Street side, I mean, Washington Street side.
If you look at the back corner of this building, if you've been out there, this brown is the back corner of the building, the gray is the existing edge of pavement. So that access drive that comes down on the side of the shopping center is right here. There are, there's, this is where the, uh, bank and commercial buildings are, there's a house here, this is the furniture factory, uh, building there.
Richard Parks.
And, um, I think this is part of it as well, or there's another building right there, but there are three or four curb cuts right along that side. We're basically aligned opposite where that, um, furniture building is closest to the road.
All these are, are commercial structures where the spillover is happening, right?
This right here is on the, it's only in the pavement in the street.
Okay.
So it's not outside of the ride of life.
Okay.
Dude, I don't know, I haven't been there at night, I wonder if they have lighting coming off of there that's gonna affect your life?
I don't recall that there's a lot of lighting in there. There is, in the shopping center, there's a light right here.
Yeah, you can't think about that, yeah.
I, I did have a couple of questions about the lighting plan. It looks like you added, um, entrance lighting?
Correct, there were residential lighting fixtures that were put on each of the, the unit doors, and those buildings have, um, it's about between three and, I think the biggest one has eight, eight units in it, but each of the apartments has their own individual door. Uh, the only exception may be a second-story one that might share a door and then go up in. But we're not talking about sort of a, a large building where you have one entrance and then everybody has their own office. So these are more residential scale entryways where you would actually walk into your own apartment.
And that's part of your waiver request, is that you're lighting those more like a residential entrance than an active building entrance?
That's correct, so, that's why we're on that low end of the scale, is because at the residential scale, if you were to put in a fixture that is really geared more to like a, a larger commercial building that needs to have that higher light level, um, we really feel that really isn't in keeping with the scale of the, the house, the home, uh, that you're gonna have there. So that's why those are lower, is that they're residential scale light at the entrance itself, the individual entrance itself.
And did you use that? And did you use that same residential fixture on the community center entrance?
I believe that is the same on the community center entrance as well.
It, it seemed like the, if, if north is up on that map...
It is.
The, the south side of the community center has like an outdoor open area?
Yes.
And it looks like all you did was put a fixture on the, on that entrance exit, and that that outdoor area doesn't really have any lighting? Was, was that your intent?
There is, there's a fixture shown at the, sort of the notch in the building, which is covered over, you don't see it on the roof plan, but there's a fixture right here, and there is a fixture here as well.
Right, and, and those seem to be appropriate for the entrances.
Mm-hmm.
But the open areas to the south of the community building were...
In the play area?
Yeah, there seems to be a fixture like out on the pavement, but there's really nothing in and around the play area. Was that your intent, not to light that?
There's no pole-mounted fixture in here, there is a building-mounted fixture right there.
Right.
But I don't see, I'm not sure where you're seeing something there.
That's what I'm asking you, I, I don't see anything there.
There isn't.
Is, is that appropriate to not light that?
It's intended to be obviously for day use for children. This access right here goes out onto that play area, so it's envisioned that if someone were in the community building and the children could be, you know, playing here, and you could sit and watch and socialize from within the building and see them.
Okay.
So, it wasn't, it's not really geared to be a nighttime activity in the play area itself. It's more of a, sort of a low-key day use.
Does the city have any concerns with safety or visibility for that? Okay.
They can light a tiki torch, I'm just kidding. I'm just absolute hundred percent kidding.
I, I guess my concern with granting the waivers is not particularly for this project, but the door that it opens for other applicants that are going to request waivers for entrances, can we...
So, the way I looked at it, is it trying to provide more of a neighborhood feel and less of a park feel for that area?
Right.
And they chose not to overlay it.
Are you thinking that you'd have a stronger light above the community center door, or...
No, I'm really just trying to bracket the, the justification, because the next applicant that's going to walk in and wants to put three-foot candles at a residential entrance is going to say, oh, well, because the standard is twenty.
The question is, how big is that green space, or how, what, what type of...
The play area itself, well, let's just go the distance between the two buildings. Maybe forty feet between the two buildings. So, we've got, from here to here is about forty feet between the two buildings. There is lighting in this area here that, my eyesight is severely impaired. On the pavement itself, we are, it looks like, can you read those numbers later?
And, and the sidewalk right next to the pavement is within the standards.
We've got one point two to point seven on the sidewalk in that area there. So, there is, it's obviously not a dark corner, but...
What was your comment going to be?
I was going to say, on the development side, if you illuminate, that it is going to be a place for teenagers to hang out at night. And you've got a residential area with, you know, ten feet from the boundary of that playground. I, my own personal opinion, I think it would be better if it wasn't illuminated, just to discourage people, or discourage it being a hangout spot.
Okay.
Because teenagers can hang out anywhere, but I think you might have to give them a period.
Ah, okay. The other question I had was, there was an area of low lighting that was in the, to the right side of the boundary where the, where the other light fixture was from the other property. What, that one area, what, what was the use of that, is there a dumpster there?
It's the backside of the dumpster, it's, I think it's just the way that the dumpster creates the shadow.
The backside of whose dump?
That's the proposed dumpster as part of our project, so there's a dumpster and an enclosure right here.
Uh-huh.
And the lighting is designed to have, it's shielded, so there's lighting here and here, and it's got a, it's got a shaded area behind the dumpster, basically.
So, apart, so the primary place for people to take their trash is that dumpster?
That is one of the dumpsters, yeah.
So, if I, in, in those four buildings that surround it, I'd be taking my trash out there late at night to throw it into the dumpster, and what you're saying is, as I approach the dumpster, it's lit from this side, but if I go around behind it, it's dark back there.
On the backside, that is correct, it's not dark, it's just not at the higher standard, correct.
And there is a, some sort of fixture in the...
There's a fixture literally...
In the adjacent property.
Yeah, approximately fifteen feet away.
Okay, thank you for that, I thought the dark spot was in front of the dumpster, and I'd be walking into the dark, throwing my trash away, never mind.
There's a really well-done lighting plan here, that, it's almost ironic, you have deficiency behind the dumpster, but right probably ten feet away, there's an excess spillage, so...
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Does the city have any more items that they wish to address?
No, but if you do any waiver, if you consider any waiver, just make sure that, remind you to do the motion compliant with the waiver section of the ordinance.
Oh, right, that would be...
Makes the planner very happy.
Section six oh two point nine A, B, and C, for anybody that would make the motion.
In this case, it's B and C, yeah.
Oh, B and C, okay, so, before we get there, this is a public meeting, does any member of the public wish to comment? Hearing none, I close the public meeting. What would the board like to do with this application?
I'd want to make Michelle upset.
Jim hasn't done one, he...
Yeah, Jim's still learning.
This is a final plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a final plan for a major-use site development plan and major subdivision titled Ellsworth Workforce Housing Project for the Manx Development LLC. The proposal is to construct a ten-family apartment buildings, fifty total units, and one community building on a four point six seven acre lot at sixty-three, sixty-seven, and sixty-nine Washington Street in the urban zone. Also noting a waiver request under Article six oh nine, six oh two point nine. On August eighteenth, the applicant justified their waiver requests for the spillage onto Washington Street and, and, and the deficiency behind the dumpster. We move to approve this application.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
So, does this mean that the waiver was granted?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, are there any MyLars to sign tonight?
Yeah.
Did you guys bring your MyLars?
Yes, they would like to get their MyLars signed tonight.
All right, then, the chair would entertain some sort of a motion that alluded to the fact that the meeting would be adjourned after the MyLars was signed.
I'll make the motion adjourn the meeting after MyLars have been signed.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?